Seaberton.
Here.
Kuyfer.
Here.
Kooz.
Here.
Zingy.
Here.
Isom.
Here.
Flora.
Here.
Gage.
Here.
Please join me in my dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, everybody. All right, that brings us down to our first item. It's a public hearing on Resolution 182694, amending the 2018 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the Museum Department amount of $9,701. Um, is anybody here to speak to that? CNN will close that public hearing. It takes us down to Communications. You don't have much on the table. Something from Seccon.
Lot A, 988.
Oh, and then a 986 laying on the table.
And that Communication.
And Nancy. Oh, yeah, I got that right here. All right, that brings us to persons to be heard. Joe, you want to start it off?
Good evening, Council. Joe White, Chief of Police. I'm here tonight just to introduce you to our three newest officers. We have Vincent Kowalski from Petersburg. He started in January, correct? Amanda Hanchett, who started early May, uh, early January, and Cody Moss, who just started three weeks ago. So they're all Ketchikan born and raised, Ketchikan, uh, born, moved back and forth. Um, she went through high school here to high school and then shortly came back there a little bit ago. And Vince is from Petersburg, so that's close enough to Ketchikan.
Yeah, sure, you bet.
I was born in Petersburg. It's gotta be good.
It's good. So I just wanted to take a minute to introduce them to you guys. Do you have any questions for them?
No, welcome to the squad. Thank you. Thank you, Joe. Nancy, you're next.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Nancy McNulty. I'd like my comments tonight being entered into the record. My husband and I own and operate Talbot's Inc. Talbot's is a repairing land owner with a 364-foot waterfront dock, shoreward of the berth four dock. Talbot's has plans to build a float plane dock at the property. The Corps of Engineers float plane permit to construct that dock is active until 2022. Talbot's also owns and operates two retail souvenir stores located on its property. We employ 20 people and have served the many visitors to our city for years. Prior to opening these souvenir stores, we served the residents of Ketchikan for over 25 years, selling building supplies and other materials that Ketchikan residents use to build their homes and businesses. For nearly 100 years, we and our predecessors that owned the business have been a staller part of Ketchikan's community. I am here tonight to express Talbot's objection to 15A1 under Executive Session Negotiation of Amendment to the Berth Four Agreements to undertake facility modifications to accommodate post-Panama vessels for the 2019 cruise ship season Ketchikan Dock Company. I am also here tonight to express Talbot's support for Option Two under New Business 7A1, selection of preferred design options. Option Two is a thousand, over 1,000 feet away from the fish processing plants and does not impede the entrance to Thomas Basin any more than the present berth one cruise ship dock infrastructure. There are a number of solutions to resolve concerns regarding the capacity for upland transportation improvements at berth two. For example, off-port staging areas could be used, if necessary, to alleviate potential congestion when higher passenger count vessels are berthed at berth two. From Talbot's perspective, the option that makes most sense would be to allocate the resources toward Option Two, which allows the city to expand city-owned Bursts One and Two to be modified so each can accommodate a post-Panama-sized cruise ship Class E. Once construction is complete, the city owns these docks outright. By selecting Option Two over Option One, the city will have the flexibility to dock a Class A, B, C, D, or E ship at both city-owned Bursts One and Two and will not be limited to just a Class A ship at berth two. This flexibility will allow the city to attain optimal use of Bursts One and Two. There are also many other advantages to expanding both city-owned Bursts One and Two to accommodate up to a Class E ship, one being if berth one or two were damaged, as berth three was a few years ago, the city will still have a berth downtown capable of berthing the largest ship Class E, nearest the majority of the tourist attractions and shopping. For all the reasons I've stated here tonight and over the last couple of years, as well as the reasons given in the public comment Talbot's submitted to the Corps of Engineers on December 22nd, 2017, objecting to the expansion of berth four. Talbot's remains opposed to any expansion or modification to berth four and any amendment to the berth four lease agreements. As to the development of berth four, it does not make economic sense for the city to burden itself with a nearly $3 million yearly lease payment for an amendment to the berth four lease for something that it will not own nor control, particularly when the city can expand city-owned Bursts One and Two to accommodate post-Panama cruise ships Class E. Moreover, there is a settlement agreement recorded on 11/9/2009 between the city, Survey Point Holdings, Ketchikan Dock Company, and Talbot's regarding the existing berth four dock that imposes obligations on the parties. Talbot's will continue to protect its interests under that agreement related to any further development of berth four. Throughout Ketchikan's history, for various reasons, parts of dock, Mission and Main Streets, as well as other streets, have been closed off to vehicle traffic for a period of time to allow large crowds of people to enjoy events in a relaxed and safe atmosphere. As cruise ship passenger counts increase over the next few years, the city will be making plans on how to accommodate this large increase in passengers. These crowds of passengers are nothing new to Ketchikan. Over 10 years ago, the Third Avenue bypass was built in part to help alleviate the traffic in the downtown core to accommodate the ever-expanding cruise ship industry. As the cruise ship industry expands further, the city will have to make decisions on how to safely manage this increase and receive the greatest benefits to the citizens of Ketchikan and the resources that they will allocate to these improvements. I've attended many of the port and upland planning meetings over the last several years, and I've spoken with all of you regarding port expansion and upland improvements and appreciate you taking the time to listen to my concerns. Talbot strongly supports Option Two. We believe it is in the best economic interests of the city of Ketchikan and provides for the city to attain optimal use of Bursts One and Two well into the future and the economic benefits that derived from that development. Thank you.
Thanks, Nancy. Thanks for providing the writing, too. All right, next we have vistas. Do we have vistas here? Couple of them. Now, if you guys leave, we'll lose our crowd.
Bobby McCrary. Tonight, hi. Tonight I am the sponsor of a Vista team that is standing behind me along with one of the Vista supervisors. Vista, AmeriCorps Vista is a program that brings, in this case, young energetic people to town for a year. They live in definitely poverty wages and have a lot of attention to things that are needed in our town. Tonight they'll give you a very brief summary of what they have done in their first six months here and pass out something that you can read about it also. And the one supervisor that's with us tonight is Carla Lindy, and she is from Community Connections. And I'm not going to make her talk or you listen to too much of us. So, let's see. Can we start with Sydney? Okay.
Excuse me, I have a cold. My name is Sydney Jones. I'm in AmeriCorps Vista with Bobby McCrary. She's my supervisor.
Can you remind us where you're from?
Atlanta, Georgia. Yeah, from the south, the actual south.
The actual southeast. We say go dogs here, but we mean the huskies down in the cities.
See, my mom was at Clemson. Different school.
There you go. I won't interrupt you anymore.
Excuse me, I've been in a Vista for about six months now, so it's given me a pretty good view of what our youth here need in Ketchikan. I work primarily with 14 and 24, and that's quite a stretch because that covers a couple of different, um, just it's like one, half of two generations in there. And you really see the different needs they need in becoming leaders in their own community. Um, one issue that Ketchikan has is it's an island. It's a remote island, which means when our youth grow up, they either leave and stay in a relatively remote place. We need a capacity, um, not just in Ketchikan youth initiatives, but within the city of Ketchikan in Saksman, to record their ideas, their bright ideas, and their initiatives to really be leaders. Um, it's difficult to continue when, say, you have a 14-year-old who has this great idea and then they move. Then what happens next? So I think the future of Ketchikan could greatly benefit by using other vistas like ourselves to work with the youth in Ketchikan. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, um, my name is JD Martin, and I'm from Albuquerque, Mexico. Um, and I'm the Vista serving with women in safe homes for about six months now. Um, one of the things I've spent a lot of time doing is, um, if you're familiar with Women in Safe Homes, you know that we have this great program, Girls on the Run. They've been doing it for about a decade. Um, so it's been so successful that we've been wanting to bring a similar voice program to Ketchikan. So I've been doing some fundraising and finding volunteers to bring this program here called Let Me Run, which is going to serve a similar demographic to Girls on the Run. Um, it's going to be for elementary school-aged boys. We're actually starting our first season next week at Houghtling Elementary School. Uh, we're going to do a, a team of 10 boys, and then next year we're going to open it up to more teams, so we're really excited about that. And this program teaches boys about emotional expression and healthy masculinity and nutrition and about leaving, leading an active lifestyle. And so programs like this are really important to the community because they help, you know, give children the life skills that they need to reject things like, you know, using alcohol or drugs later in life. It gives them communication skills. It'll help them when they enter into relationships and, you know, as they grow up. Um, so prevention is a really important part of the community and plugging our youth in with healthy mentors and giving them, um, you know, the, the skills that they need to get through life. Um, some of the other stuff that I'm doing with Wish, I'm currently doing a community readiness assessment on intimate partner violence. And so, uh, we're almost done with it. And when we're done with this assessment, we're going to be able to better understand, like, what are the needs here in Ketchikan for preventing intimate partner violence? If you know the statistics, about 50% of the women in Ketchikan will experience partner violence or sexual assault in their lifetime. So when we have this better understanding of like what is the current climate and understanding of partner violence, and we can better, um, we're going to recreate our prevention plan and make sure that we're, um, really targeting the populations who need, um, that level of support and honing our, our programs to that. Um, and then I'm doing just some sort of backend stuff. I'm creating some documents to help Wish, um, their own sort of internal capacity with, you know, manuals and resources and making just sure that everything is up to date. So that's just some of the things that I'm doing for Wish.
Thank you.
My name is Ashley Kessler. I'm a local from Ketchikan, serving with the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition. And I've actually been serving since last May. I began as a summer associate, which was a short-term Vista. Um, and I worked on the Karen Eeks Memorial Fund Run over the summer and helped run the first heritage camp through the Wellness Coalition, where I was part of the school district and brought in youth ages five through sixth, fifth, sorry, ages pre-k through sixth grade to explore their own culture and heritage. And then in my, within my term as a Vista, which began in August, I've worked to compile an online resource directory called KetchaLinks, which is found on the Ketchikan Wellness Coalition website, where I've compiled local resources as well as national-level resources for people coming into the community that may not be aware of what resources are available to them. And I've also worked to strengthen the Wellness Coalition's partnership with Wish through the Revilla Island Resilience Initiative, where we're focusing on creating a more, sorry, a better-informed community around trauma and adverse childhood experiences.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sandra, and I'm from Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and I'm with Community Connections. Um, and what I've been working on, all has to do with marketing and communications and trying to really tell the story of Community Connections and get the word out there about our services. Because we have a lot of different services, and sometimes people only know about one or two of them. They know a client or one of our employees or someone who used to work there. Um, so really getting, getting the word out about that. So a lot of social media posts and making some videos and writing some stories and stuff like that. And then the other part of my assignment is recruiting more staff to work for us. So we have a lot of what we call support specialists who work directly with our clients. Um, and since we have a lot of clients, we need a lot of support specialists to help them out. And so it's a challenge to recruit for those positions sometimes. And so I'm just helping, uh, create materials to better recruit them in the community. And from down south, sometimes we need to bring up people. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So you see, I was right, huh? Pretty bright young people, just awesome. As you may or may not know, AmeriCorps was started by Lyndon Johnson, um, over 50 years ago, and is also known as the War on Poverty. And behind each one of these, um, assignments is a dedication to trying to help people rise out of poverty, you know, survive in poverty, et cetera. So there's always a poverty theme behind a Vista project. What I've just passed around to you are the summer associate postings that we hope to have approved for this summer. So that will have two, hopefully, at KYI, one at the Wellness Coalition, and one with Sale. We also have additional vistas coming in. We will have one working with Sale again. They've had one previously. One working with Historic Keshkan on blighted buildings and funding, uh, low-cost job training. And another one from, hmm, First City Homeless Services that is now being reorganized, that Ev and Terry will be reassigned to another post in the Methodist Church, and that will be working with Homeless Services. So we will have a total of seven vistas at that point, and it's a great asset to our community, so we're very pleased to have them. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Bobby. Thank you, everybody, for coming. All right, that brings us to Mary.
Good evening. I'm Mary Wancer with Coastal Real Estate Group. I am here on behalf of my clients, John and Margaret Carusa, and their property that we are in the process of selling at 809 Water Street. Because in the process, we found this cloud on the title, and so we're asking for you to approve the special ordinance to remove that cloud. And I'd also like to thank the city attorney for all of his help with this. It's kind of been an exercise in history lesson, and he's done a great job. So I'm just here to answer any questions, should you have them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I have nobody else signed up to speak to the council tonight. Does anybody else wish to speak to us? All right, CNN, we'll move on. That brings us to... All right, consent agenda. Ideas of adding to the consent agenda are 6A4, declaring the Gateway Court as surplus property, the appointment to boards and commissions. We have one member going back on the museum board, a re-appointment. And then 7A4, it's in or it's in first reading. Since we're busy tonight, I thought we could, if anybody wanted to talk about it, we could do it in the second reading, next meeting. And then Mary's item there are the property titles, so... Anybody else? The caption shall be said, shall be done. Madam Clerk, can you read the items?
Your Honor, I move to consent.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting, March 1st, 2018. Resolution Number 182694, amending the 2018 General Government Operating and Capital Budget to provide a supplemental appropriation for the Museum Department in the amount of $9,701. Designated April 21st through 28th, 2018, as Spring Cleanup Week. A liquor license renewal, several of them, City Lighthouse Liquor Store, The Pizza Mill, and First City Saloon. Exempting the procurement of video-on-demand hardware and software and support services from the competitive bid and rent quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's with ubiquity. And exempting the procurement of Ericsson Network Management Services from the competitive bidding, rent, and quotation requirements of the Ketchikan Municipal Code. That's with Central LTE Holdings. Um, ordinance number 181873, declaring that 623 Gateway Court is surplus property, authorizing the sale of that property in second reading. Um, appointments to boards and commissions, as Mayor Williams already pointed out. Um, ordinance number 181874, amending Section 18.44.020 of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Charges Regarding Ambulance Charges. And that's in first reading. And finally, ordinance number 181875, proclaiming its interest in real property at 809 Water Street, Ketchikan, Alaska, quit claiming, uh, to John and Margaret Carusa to remove a cloud on the title to that property. And that's in first reading.
Dick.
Um, I would, I would ask that, when we come back for second reading, on the ambulance charges, that we have some justification for a couple of those. One of them's 50%, one of them's 30%, and there may be a couple of other high ones. But that seems to me like a terrible jump.
Thank you, Dick. All right, I'll take care of that. Take care of it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, I just want to make sure and bring attention to the item three, which is Spring Cleanup. And I think Lenny's here. Lenny, what are we going to be providing for Spring Cleanup this year in regards to services? I hate it when people miss this.
Yeah, I was already asking. I make sure I have everything out.
Lenny Neely, Soloway Superintendent. What was that, Bob? I'm sorry.
I just wondered what we're going to be providing over that, uh, week, where is it, Saturday through Saturday, is it not?
It is. It's, uh, you know, we refer to that as the Super Bowl Garbage Week. Last year, I think we got about 588 tons. So that one-week period, um, part of the fee that everyone pays, they're able for one week to bring material to the landfill residence, and it's, it's free of charge for that.
Is it hazardous stuff you have to pay?
No hazardous waste yet. No hazardous waste. Uh, that's actually in my note. The Southeast Soloway Authority right now is, uh, working on an agreement with, with a new vendor, which hopefully, uh, will be part of that and do our own contract. So that'll probably be next month.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, Lenny, uh, how about electronics?
No electronics yet.
Okay.
Tires, sure, you can bring them off the rim.
Anybody else?
And then within the, um, boundaries of the city, we're providing a collection service?
That's correct. The Streets Department does a collection service. Uh, there'll be advertising coming out on that, but it's the same as what it's always been, where it's a bulk item pickup. Uh, construction material, that doesn't include construction material. They have to bring that to the landfill. But as far as bulk items and stuff, that is curbside. And part of that's just a reminder, everyone, be respectful of your neighbor. You know, don't pile it all on their property, but, uh, that, that's, uh, like I said, normally, uh, something to do over here.
And there's some limitations. It has to be, um, no larger than a 10-yard load, right?
That's correct. And brush should be no longer in four feet and tide. You know, I always tell people, place it at the curb in the manner like you were picking it up. Just don't throw it out there, you know, kind of put it out there nice and orderly, and then keep it away from your regular garbage collection because it's a different crew that picks it up.
And we want freezers and refrigerators empty, correct?
That, that's correct. Doors off those, you know, the doors off.
Don't share this information with your, I said.
Doors off.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we get that and have it out to the public as many times as we possibly can.
Like I said, we, we've got advertisements going to be taking place pretty soon, and we'll do our regular radio stuff like we do every year, and, uh, hopefully it'll be a great event.
You should actually advertise it as the Super Bowl of Super Bowl garbage.
It is the Super Bowl week, you know, and, uh, you know, it's, uh, always a good time, and it's a, a good way to start spring, so.
Thank you, Lenny. Yeah, the only thing, make sure you tell your crew that Desmond Rose Street thanks for all their help on my garbage. It's been super outpour through all this time, and, uh, there's free coffees for them down at Brutal Waking. I don't know if they've got them yet. They were going to give them.
Oh, I'll definitely, I'm sure that, I'm sure they'll appreciate that.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us down to voting.
Seaberton.
Yes.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Kooz.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
And Gage.
Yes.
That passes 7 to 0, and that brings us to unfinished business, 6A1, ordinance 181872, adding a new chapter, 7.04, entitled Healthcare Transparency to Ketchikan Municipal Code, first reading deferred from March 1st. We do have a motion already on the, um, floor for adding a new chapter, um, healthcare transparency to the municipal code. All right. Judy?
Um, do we need a, a motion for this?
It's our, no, the motion's already out. Same motion.
That's where we refer.
I've had a lot of folks, um, visiting me on this ordinance, and they're supportive. I hope to see some of those people at the meeting on the 21st.
So if this gets approved tonight, Carl, then you'll go get all that information for us before the second reading?
That's correct. Uh, tomorrow, uh, the city attorney, city attorney and I are going to be meeting with Peace Health. And then we do have a public meeting on Wednesday. We'll compile the comments, and I hope to get those to the council for the April 5th meeting.
Okay. Off, so Carl, what kind of response have we had from the medical community?
My office has had one call, and that was from a mental health clinician wanting some help in interpreting the ordinance. And that's the only feedback I've had other than Gate, uh, excuse me, other than Peace Health. And as I indicated, we've arranged to sit down with them tomorrow.
Didn't you get a letter? I got a copy of a letter from someone who, you didn't?
No, I, I have not.
Did I?
Being that I saw a couple of doctors this way, just asked them in random how they felt about it, and they were pro, because they already do it.
All right, anybody else want to add to the conversation? CNN, color roll.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Kooz.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Isom.
Yeah.
Flora.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Seaberton.
Yes.
That passes 7 to 0, and brings us down to 782, ordinance 1880, 1865, amending the Ketchikan Municipal Code, Section 1308, 180A, entitled Water Related to Rates, adding a new section, 1308, 185, entitled wastewater related to rates, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor, I move the city council approving second reading, ordinance number 18-1865, amending Section 13.08.180A of the Ketchikan Municipal Code entitled Water Relating to Rates, adding a new section, 13.08.185, entitled wastewater relating to rates, and establishing effective data.
Sorry. Move to second. Bob?
Uh, uh, we talked about this a little bit before. It's talking about some of the rates at the, um, the ports. And, uh, I think we're just moving forward in a positive manner.
Excellent. Anybody else? Color roll.
Kooz.
Yes.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Seaberton.
Yes.
Gage.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
All right, that passes 7 to 0, and that brings us down to 783. Ordinance 181867, Junior Lean Obligations Payable from the City Sewer Fund not to exceed $5 million to finance sewer main replacement project, a loan agreement, ADC loan in amount of $1.6 million, second reading. Do we have a motion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
I move the city council approving second reading, ordinance number 181867, authorizing junior lean obligations payable to the city sewer fund in the principal amount not to exceed $5 million to finance costs of voter-approved sewer main replacement projects, approving the loan agreement with ADC for the initial junior lean loan in the amount of $1,600,000, subject to the expected fund subsidy, ADC loan number 481031, and establishing effective data.
Move in second. Bob, do you have anything to add?
No, you're not, Your Honor.
Carl, this is the stuff we already did, correct?
That is correct.
What's our payment going to be to pay back of $59,000? Bob here.
Bob is, Finance Director is not here, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't know.
No, it says right here, annual debt service would be $59,000, so, good deal. Color roll.
Gage.
Yes.
Flora.
Yes.
Isom.
Yes.
Zingy.
Yes.
Kooz.
Yes.
Kuyfer.
Yes.
Seaberton.
Yes.
All right, that brings us to unfinished business, KPUB1, which is the next loan. Ordinance 1880, 1866, Junior Lean Obligation Payable from the city's municipal utilities not to exceed $5 million to finance water main replacement project, a loan agreement with ADC in amount of $1.4 million, second reading.
Your Honor.
Go ahead, Dave.
I move the city council approving second reading, ordinance number 181866, authorizing junior lean obligations payable from city's municipal utilities in the principal amount of not to exceed $5 million to finance costs of voter-approved water main replacement projects, approving a loan agreement with ADC for an initial junior lean, lean loan. In the amount of $1.4 million, subject to an expected funding subsidy, ADC loan number 481041. D E C loan number four eight one zero four one, and establishing effective date.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Now, Carl, did I read this right, that we're getting seven hundred thousand off the debt there, so we're really only getting six hundred and eighty-six?
That's a possibility, Mr. Mayor.
Makes it only a forty thousand payment. All right, great. Anybody else? Colorado.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing, that brings us down to seven A one, selection of preferred design option contract, seventeen thirty-five, update design, berth one and two expansion, Moffett Nichols. Bob, do you want to do that?
Your Honor, I wish to defer this until consideration of a recommendation and a motion until after the executive session.
You guys want to do the executive session?
Yes.
Let's do it now, so that we can just come back and deal with it. Do we have a motion to go into executive session? And that would be number?
Number one. Yeah, Your Honor, I move the City Council to clarify consistent with the city manager report dated March fifth, two thousand and eighty, in the best interest of the city councils, discuss negotiations, the amendment of the lease, and other definite agreements between the city and the Ketchikan Dock Company LLC related to the expansion of berth four to accommodate the larger Ketchikan vessels, and the executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code two point zero four point zero two five A one and three, and include the need to discuss subjects knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on finance of the city and receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Who did second, Colorado.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Seivertson?
Yes. That passed seven to nothing, we're going to go into executive session, be right. We're on executive session, we're back in the regular session, we're on, back to the seven A one, the selection of preferred design options for contract seventeen thirty-five, update design, berth one, to expand to Moffett Nichols, do we have a motion?
Your Honor?
Go ahead.
I move the City Council to select option number one, preferred design alternative under contract number seventeen dash thirty-five, design of berth one and two expansion, and direct the city manager to advise Moffett Nickel to proceed with the preparation of permit applications and development of the design up to thirty-five percent.
Who did second, do we have anybody with more comments? Colorado.
Okay, Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Hey, that passes seven. Did somebody?
She hadn't answered yet.
Oh, sorry, gently. I'll wait patiently.
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to nothing, that brings us down to new business, number B A two, resolution eighteen twenty-six ninety-three, requesting the federal emergency management agency allow one year to evaluate and comment on the data presented in preliminary flood plane maps, and request FEMA inspecting ground truth, all properties and structures being exacted into the FEMA determined flood zone.
Your Honor?
Go ahead, Dave.
I move the City Council to approve resolution number eighteen dash twenty-nine, twenty-six ninety-three, requesting the federal emergency management agency allow one year to evaluate and comment on the data presented in preliminary flood plane maps, and request FEMA inspect and ground truth, I hate that phrase, all properties and structures being exacted into the FEMA determined flood zones.
Second. Who did second? I know we have somebody from the borough. Do you have any questions, otherwise? Any comments?
You look pretty sharp there.
I know.
I feel underdressed, I mean, I mean, the bowtie is definitely, that's what's nice.
Looks good. Any comments?
No, this just needs to be.
Colorado.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gage?
Yeah.
Seivertson?
Yes.
Kifer?
Yes.
Kuz?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to nothing, that brings us down, thank you for coming. That brings us down to seventy-three, single unit sales tax exempt, Councilmember Flora. I mean, Mark, take it away. I was going to tell you, Bob, this time.
I move the City Council to adopt the motion directing staff to take such action regarding the single unit sales tax exemption as determined appropriate by the City Council.
Second. All right, go ahead.
Okay, well, this came up again, a revisitation by the Cooperative Relations Committee, and it was determined that we should bring this back to both respective bodies. It's come up that the sales tax cap, I believe, has not been raised since, I think it's nineteen seventy-eight, and then there was brief discussion about if it were raised, how could it be raised? It could be raised across the board, it could be raised seasonally, it could be raised by class of product, or it could be raised by geographic location, those are some of the examples. So we would just ask to bring it back to each respective body for discussion.
Many discussion.
The last time the Senate Council killed, didn't they?
Yeah, they were, they went up from a thousand.
Because I remember the Assembly approving it, and the Council saying.
Yeah, we did a lot of.
The time before that, the Council said yes, and the Assembly said no. The issue you always hear is, well, it's going to hurt sales in X, Y, or Z. Well, we used to always hear, well, this is going to, it's going to hurt, you know, sales in cars, it's going to hurt sales in furniture, it's going to hurt sales in.
Yeah, the retailers are the ones that made the noise.
And, and at one point, there was some discussion, I'm not sure on the city side or on the borough side, was could you just target it? Could you say jewelry sales?
Determined, yes.
Well, my memory of when we talked about in the Assembly was the, the staff said no, I mean, the, the attorney said no, so, but other, other communities have done it, so therefore.
And no one's gotten in trouble?
As far as I know, no one has. Was it Juno or Skaggar or someone just said bam, we're raising the rate on jewelry sales?
I don't see why, I, I don't know the law, but I don't see why it couldn't, we do it, we do it with hotels. We're already doing it. Go to Seattle, it's fifteen point six percent, and we do it here. There's a transient sales tax here for a class of good. So it's already, the precedent has been in place for quite some time.
Carl, I know we've, you know, we talked this before, you guys looked up what the other cities' levels were. Can you get that for us again?
I think it's, it's in the packet, Mr. Mayor. I'd have to get some of the previous documentation. I think what the information shows is that the greater Ketchikan community is really behind the times relative to raising the cap.
Absolutely, absolutely.
When compared to other municipalities, if you're looking for a conservative approach, I guess my recommendation would be, the borough at, at one time approved raising it to two thousand dollars. Even if we did that, we're still way behind, but maybe that's the first, first step, if that's something the council wanted to consider. Cooperative Relations, I think, is meeting a week from tomorrow. The borough's meeting, Borough Assembly is meeting Monday. I mean, you don't have to take any action, but I think everybody would say with some certainty that we are lagging far behind, other Southeast communities are doing.
Well, that could be good.
I'm not sure it's cheering up any additional sales, but, and a lot of the companies that you, I'm sorry.
So what did the borough, did you see? What's talking about?
Two thousand.
But that was several, several years ago, and it was adopted contention upon the city, and I think at one point there was a ruling that so much time had gone by that the Borough Assembly would have to adopt it again, if, you know, something came out of Cooperative Relations that said, let's look at raising it to two thousand, three thousand, whatever.
So, Mark, are you looking for some direction to go back to the meeting?
Yes, sir.
Yes, too.
Does that include residential rents? I mean, we're raising water rates, and we're raising electric rates, and, I mean, some rents are over a thousand dollars, would it?
It would, unless the council wanted to propose putting a.
Well, Skaggar did an exemption here for, um, construction materials over twenty-five hundred. So, I mean, you could put exemptions.
You could. Yeah, you, you can put any exemption you want.
I, I, I think, since we're not going to make, you know, decisions tonight, I think we just need to consider, before we go back to Cooperative Relations, do we want to consider it in, in any rendition? We can start with no, and work from there. Do we want to target a class of goods like jewelry? Do we want to have rents exempted? Do we want to, you know, take this further to see if there's something that we in the Assembly can come to an agreement on together? And I don't really know what, what the Assembly feels, you know, which direction, they may not want to do anything at all, which could make it moot anyway.
Well, do we have four hands, are there people interested at least discussing this? Wow, Mark, you have seven hands.
It's not easy.
Go ahead, Bob, and then you.
Yeah, I think it's important that we get together with the borough, and we make a, a decision together in regards to how we move forward with this, that we're all doing apples and apples, and we're not, yeah, so I, I think that's the next step, that we sit down and we need to take up things like rental exemptions, or fuel, or, you know, whatever it may be, and put those together and pack it, and maybe take a look at some of those numbers.
My comment, Lou, is having, I guess, sit down a couple of different meetings in years past, is the numbers in the spreadsheet got so big and complicated, you almost threw your hands up in the air, what you're trying to get done. So somehow or other, staff needs to help us simplify it, and, and just say, okay, you know, if we raise, raise it to a certain amount, it's just right here, and, and I'm not too worried about the other communities right now, because we're nowhere low. We just need to figure out what it is we think we want to live with, and deal with it. And, and whether we kick it around, Cooperative Relations more and say that, staff's going to have to bring back something, but I think that's where it's got to start. It's got to be simple.
Thanks, Dick, Julie.
I, I think the Cooperative Relations Committee is looking for better direction than that, specific. When they said to take it back to the bodies, they, I think they wanted Mark or us to come back with a specific, maybe even a specific number, two thousand.
I think two thousand's the one they were talking about.
I thought it was three.
No, here at the table.
Oh, okay.
I'd stick with two thousand and then talk about exemptions.
If we're going, I'm sorry. If we're going to get more specific, then I would offer up actually looking at a class of, of goods. We just raised water rates, we just raised rates on locals. I would be most interested in looking at an option that can capture some money from tourism, that can actually be moved off that dock and into our streets and sidewalks and other infrastructure, because right now, CPV and orphanage just gets recycled right back into the dock. If we're going to raise the cap, let's see if we can do something that actually benefits the locals that are not direct beneficiaries of tourism. Just a thought.
We get a lot of sales tax. I like your idea. Go ahead.
So exemptions would include rentals of dwellings?
We don't know that.
No, we don't, no.
It's something.
That's to be discussed.
Okay.
I'm, I'm using Councilmember Kifer as an example. For example, jewelry, okay, some, something like that, something that folks that aren't here year-round may purchase.
Or what about, like, the cigarette thing, the borough did the cigarettes at two dollars?
Last year, when we discussed this at Cooperative Relations, I believe Ms. Gubetayo said that they did have the ability to target a class of goods, a season, there were, there were ways to, to, to narrow this down. I'm, I'm not as excited about doing it seasonally, because I think we have the opportunity then to tax locals greater on big purchases like building materials. Building season, construction season coincides with tour season.
Right.
So then, I, I think that there's too much overlap there. So if we want to take more specific direction back, then we.
Well, I think, you know, we give them direction that they're interested, I think, you know, because it is a committee, we're going to, you guys bring us back some ideas, give us something to look at.
I think that's what Councilmember Isom's saying, is I think they did, they want the ideas to come.
From us?
From us, and from them for, for when we need.
Well, they're talking about a two thousand cap, they want some exemptions, especially on the rent.
Rent.
See what you guys come up with. Bob?
At one point, we used to have a tax committee that would sit down and probably work with these things. I don't know if the Cooperative Relations Committee is willing to take on that role, but I think that there may be a point where the manager, mayor can sit down and discuss with the borough and put together a committee to address this single situation, because it's going to take the finance departments talking about what the implications and impacts, or if there was someplace in the future, I mean.
Well, if we, if we give the things that we want to exempt, rent, services like electric, I mean, those services, electric and P, there's, there's also services like real estate agents.
There's all kinds of things that we have to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I can't think of all of them, so we might want, but if we can get some started.
Yep, I think that's the idea.
They'll start.
People say two thousand, then we'll work.
We'll start a conversation, because if the borough side of it is they have no appetite for it all, then all of this.
I want to know that we've got seven hands on it.
Yes, sir.
So do we need to vote on this, Madam Clerk?
If direction is given enough for the committee members, I don't.
You got enough direction, guys?
I, I believe so.
Okay. Come back, and we'll answer one in the next meeting. Whatever you guys need. All right, that brings us down to vouchers, oh wow. We're getting allowed there. We have a motion.
Your Honor, I move to approve these vouchers, Ketchikan Daily News, for one thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second. Who did second, Colorado.
Gage?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Zingy?
Yes.
Tous?
Yes.
Hager?
Yes.
Right, that passes seven to nothing. That brings us to, back to executive sessions, where Executive Session Number Two, Potential Litigation, Leighton Dawson, Joint Venture, Construct.
The managers report.
Oh, yeah. Vouchers are part of that. Oh, yeah.
The vouchers report has been nineteen executives.
Well, they, you know, they vote on my voucher with such enthusiasm. Got to pay everybody.
Manager report.
Yeah. I got a note in my thing to say, keep now shut. Steroids are not.
Clearly you need glasses to read it.
Steroids are not good to me, trust me. I believe in road rage now. I'm steroid rage.
I'm going to do the tough one first. Pursuant to previous council direction, the City Attorney, Public Works Director, and I have been trying to move forward in bringing forth an agreement such that T-Gals can get started on the work down at Thomas Basin to repair the sheet pile wall and, and, and get that work going. At the last meeting where that was discussed, the council gave direction relative to moving forward and allowing T-Gals the opportunity to construct the Rock Birm in accordance with the conditional approval of the Corps. In exchange for that, we were directed that as part of the package, we would get an easement for the promenade if a council at some point in the future decided to move that project And that prior to the promenade being constructed, T-Gals would have the maintenance obligation on the Rock Birm. Where at the staff level, it gets, I guess, confusing is that one or more staff members took the direction of the council to mean that if and when the promenade is constructed, the city will have no obligation for any type of maintenance on the Rock Birm. Other council or other staff members took what was stated to mean if and when the promenade was ever authorized, there would be discussion between the city and T-Gals as to how any maintenance obligations would be apportioned in light of the potential impact the construction of the promenade might have on the Rock Birm. T-Gals has their interpretation of what was said that doesn't necessarily sync up with what either of the staff interpretations necessarily is. I'm looking to get the collective interpretation of the council such that I can instruct my staff and advise T-Gals as to what the collective council position is. Until I get that direction, I can't get this project moving forward. What I laid on the table tonight is nine A six is something that the attorney drafted that more or less, I think, reflects my interpretation of what was said. And I will freely admit, I could have gotten it wrong, but I need to know if this isn't what the council's position is, and you need to tell me what the council position is relative to any or no maintenance obligations relative to the Rock Birm, whether or not the promenade is constructed.
Bob and Julie.
I think first we got to, the main, the main object here is to secure the, the seawall that's there. The potential for that thing deteriorating, falling into Thomas Basin is there. And if that were to happen, we all know the city would be on the hook to, to get it fixed. So I think that, let's not lose sight of the fact that I think this berm is the corrective action and we have a private individual that's willing to pay for it. And he should have the liabilities until such time as the city decides they're able to fund and build a, a promenade in that area. At that particular time, because we don't know what that slope's going to look like and we don't even know what the design of the promenade is and what effect that may have on us, that at that time, we would sit down and discuss responsibility shared or not. There are things, I think, in construction that can mitigate some of the issues in regards to their concerns about reaching from the upland side. You can make those modular so they can be lifted out and you can work between the piling effect. I see that as availability. And, you know, I don't know what our funding parameters are going to be moving forward, but I don't think this is going to be high on the priority, being that we have so much money to invest in our port facility that this, this structure will be tested for a number of years and the responsibility of the parties that put it in to, to maintain it, we'll know more about that five years from now. So I think that the main thing is we got to make sure that we can move forward and get this thing secured and then work through the issues of the promenade on a later date.
Janalee and then Dick.
My understanding was when we voted on it was just for the easement with the contingency that if we were to ever go forward with a promenade, that we would discuss responsibility for the wall. That is what I voted for.
That's what I voted for.
That's right.
If I might, go ahead Mitch. The issue that that approach causes and why I would advise against it is we don't know what that agreement may be. The promenade easement would have built into it, you know, an, an agreement to agree, not an agreement. All, if this time, we would be giving or conveying to them the easement for the Rock Wall. Now, I think his history and his statements and everything is that Mr. Shear is all, is all for it and be reasonable about it, but he may not be the person involved. There may not be, you know, someone that's willing to cooperate. And the draft language I've been seeing from Ben is that we would come to some agreement in the future and it would be at the party's discretion. You want to get, in particular, in any agreement, particularly with the real estate agreement that's going to last, you know, possibly in perpetuity, as certain as you can. And so my recommendation would be if, if the, the notion that we would never have anything to do with the maintenance is not what we're saying, we have something in this agreement that says what our responsibilities would be. And to me, the, the reasonable approach to, to that would be to say that to the extent that we're causing additional maintenance repair expenses, that we're the ones responsible, we know that today and we know that at the same time that we're granting the easement for the Rock Birm.
Go ahead, hold it just a second, we got Dick and then Mark.
I don't think you want my question. We've, we've wasted our time now. We've been working on this project for over five years. And back in November, we started this again. And a month ago, we gave direction, I think, pretty much the way Carl wrote it out. And I guess my big question is can you get this done so that we start this next week? Let those guys go to work? I mean, it, it's just ridiculous.
Mr. Tous, I sent them the drafts in the middle of February. It was the Friday before the packet was due that I heard from Scott Brand Erickson on behalf of Mr. Dawson. We worked through some changes and some issues and corrections, had completed those by Monday because I was trying to get it to the council so that we could have it ready even before the ordinance became effective. The, the, the question about maintenance arose, I want to say about that Monday. On Wednesday, and I've just about finished working through it, I received a red line from Mr. Shear raises a number, a number of issues, some of which, if they're not resolved, are going to be sticking points that I was hearing after the, after the packet was well gone, after I told them I really wanted to try to get it in there ahead of time and have been working on that. I think my last iteration was still double spaces of five or six pages of issues that we have to deal with. That's where we are on the timing. But I, I still have the concern that we've entered into an agreement that says we're going to agree to something later, isn't really an agreement.
Can we make it instead of agree to something later, just put in there, we'll talk about the, that possible additions or whatever, not make us in any way agree to anything?
No.
I don't want to commit to something.
We would not come into place unless and until we built the promenade.
If, if I couldn't, Mr. Mayor. Where we've been on these discussions, we were pretty much representing to T-Gals our interpretation of the council's position that we were not going to be responsible for any maintenance of the berm regardless of whether a promenade went in or not. Council's clarified that now, tonight. With that clarification, I think the language that the City Attorney has drafted and that you had before you essentially will tell T-Gals that yes, we will have maintenance obligations if we construct the promenade. And I think that will be a whole lot closer to where they want us to be than where we've been to up to this point. So I think this pretty much should get us there in terms of the maintenance issue. But as the City Attorney stated, there are other, what I'm not going to call, there, there, there are legal entitlement issues that they are now proposing that have really not a lot to do with the berm and, and getting the seawall fixed. There are covenants down, you know, existing Spruce Mill Development covenants that come into play. I'm not going to sit here tonight and tell the council that if you give me the authorization to have the attorney present this language and T-Gals accepts it, that we'll have something for you on the fifth because of the other issues that T-Gals has raised that the City Attorney alluded to.
Hold on, say, Mark's next.
I really dislike the wording of this. I'll tell you why. Last part of it. To the extent such costs are caused by the pedestrian promenade, that's if there's maintenance issues down the road. That is an invitation to yet more lawyers and arguments because now we are inviting the conversation of there's damage to the Rock Birm and it was caused by the promenade. No, it wasn't. It was caused by the construction of the promenade. This doesn't provide the certainty that the City Attorney's talking about at all. If you want to take something back to Mr. Shear with certainty, how about this? You fix what you built, we'll fix what we built. That seems like there's a lot more clarity. And then there's one other issue. This isn't, this Rock Birm was never contingent upon a promenade happening at all. I've had a conversation via email, email with Carl and we had Mr. Shear here. So let's remember one thing before we even go down the promenade road. There is no direct benefit to the city of Ketchikan to build it ever. It doesn't bring one tourist to this town. We have no idea how much it's going to cost. We just raised rates on locals again, didn't we? But now we're talking about an unforeseen future expense of X that we can't even begin to quantify, right? Mr. Shear, at a previous meeting, said there is no direct economic benefit to him. So I think we're getting a little bit off the topic. And Mr. Councilmember Seifertson is absolutely right. And the Ports and Harbors Board, by the way, has put a ton of time and effort into this. We need to do something in Thomas Basin to protect the basin. Everybody agrees on that. But what we don't need to do is anything that expresses some sort of nebulous future promise of something that may or may not happen. If he's worried about it and wants certainty, what's wrong with just telling him, you're going to build the riprap wall, you take care of that. Someday if we build a promenade, we'll take care of that.
Well, the juncture that we're at now and what is in the ordinance that authorizes us to do this at all is that it's in exchange for an easement for promenade. You're, you're a hundred percent correct that there are a lot of contingencies, a lot of unknowns involved in all aspects of this that aren't going to be, you know, they're, they're not going to become any more clear until a time comes that we may or may not build a promenade.
Does the language?
You're, you're right. You're right, Councilmember Flora. It invites, it invites debate. But with all the unknowns involved, it, you know, and it, it, it may end up being tweaked some by the time the three parties look at it. It was what I came up with to move us off of the problem of whether or not the city is going to do anything in respect to maintenance versus an agreement in granting an easement that could be just unilaterally nullified if there is no agreement whatsoever regarding maintenance and repairs.
Does the granting of the easement in both directions mandate that there will be a promenade someday? Do we, are we obligated by, by being granted this easement? Are we obligated? Are we obliging ourselves to that?
No. But, but the easement, the granting of the easement itself, the way it's been structured and in, and in the, the ordinance that's going to be effective, I think, someday next week, assuming there's no referendum, has tied the two together. That's been the action of the council and what's been presented to the public, that we're granting this Rock Birm, it's no competitive basis, there's no payment, there's no consideration other than the granting of the easements for the area of the promenade if and when the city would decide to construct or extend that promenade.
Yes, okay.
We don't have to put it in.
Correct.
All right, anybody else? Janalee and then Dick.
I get the impression that like at the beginning of this rabbit hole, no offense, but it's like we've gone around, we've gone from, oh, we're going to come in, we're going to fix that, we're going to pay to do that. And, okay, city says, great. Then we came back with this whole thing about a promenade, which at that, that one particular meeting, I asked clarification on what I was voting for and was clar, uh, guaranteed, given the advice that no, we weren't building a promenade, we were just doing an easement so they could do the work. So now what I'm kind of hearing is that we've somehow got ourselves in, roped into doing a promenade.
No. I, I would.
The council would have to vote for me.
I, I, I don't think either of those statements are, are, are quite right. I think Ms., part of Mr. Shear's, uh, offered to, to get this done and what, part of what he thought, and I think he's right, an appeal would be is that we would at least now reserve the land for the promenade, which we may never build.
Right.
But we got to get the wall done. Dick?
Uh, I guess the comments, a couple of comments. One, in, in watching what goes on with the promenade and the access the tourists have to the T-Gal show, the promenade does me a damn thing. It goes behind them, the people are going in the front door. After that, they're going over to Creek Street or somewhere else, but it doesn't bring them business. Second, I don't think the promenade's got anything to do with it. Mr. Shear could probably put the whole Rock Wall on his property and there will never be any availability for a promenade if the city wants it. And it's always been a city project for the promenade, it hasn't been anybody else's. It's been the quote, city designers. I think Dave can think of the whole of the designing we went on to get the promenade clear around the show, over to the, the, headed south. That's been the whole intent, is a walkway. So I, I, to me, we, as far as I'm concerned, we could separate the Rock Wall, give them a permit or whatever it is to re, to build it that way. And if we want a promenade in the future, then it's setting here for us to build a promenade, but we just got to negotiate the agreement. Leave it, split the two of them apart, leave it alone till we're ready to do a promenade.
I think that that would work conceptually. The, the problem with that is in respect to timing, the ordinance that's about to become effective is being approved on the basis of the promenade easements being tied to it.
Why do we need that easement now? Why do we, I still don't get that. If we're, if we haven't decided that we're going to build a promenade, why do, why are we looking for that now?
Grant him the easement and not.
Then we have it already taken care of in case we want to do something. Otherwise, we just have to go through the process again.
I don't get the impression the promenade's going to be anytime soon, given all the other things we've got going on. I mean, let's just move this along.
So Mitch, clarify something.
Sure.
The ordinance that we approved a month ago or so.
Right.
Stated that we have to have both an easement for the promenade and for the Rock Wall? At the same time?
Yeah, basically, yes. It's one in exchange for the other.
We got snickered.
Well.
No, we didn't.
My, my, my take on it was, and I, I don't, I have no reason to say he's motivated by any business interest or, or anything else, was that Mr. Shear's always saying that he's interested in that and the, the part of this and in exchange for the easement is that we would have that promenade there. And that's what, uh, council kind of signed off when it first came around and signed off again when I figured out that we really need an easement to make all this fit under our code.
Which I think makes it easier to get that, we don't have to do anything, we can leave it there in perpetuity. But we have it there, but we got to remember, we have a, a person paying millions to fix that wall that we don't have to spend millions on.
Yeah, because initially, if you guys remember, initially, they, they wanted to say to fix that wall.
Yeah.
So you want to carefully spike that.
I think that's what the council has to keep in mind. Mr. Shear is prepared. He has a construction firm lined up to go ahead and move forward and repair that sheet pile wall. Given the ordinance that's been adopted, he's not going to move until we get this issue resolved. And I understand the language isn't perfect. It certainly doesn't bind this council or any other council to do the Promenade. And if a future council wanted to entertain a change to any agreement that was negotiated now, they could petition T-Gals to open that agreement up before a Promenade was ever built. I think what we're trying to now is get to a point where both the city and Mr. Shear are both reasonably comfortable relative to the fact that an easement's going to be granted. And he just wants some assurance that if and when the city elects to use that easement to build a Promenade, he's not going to end up with a bill to correct any deficiencies that occur as a result of the Promenade being constructed.
Right. The rest of this is just...
When you boil it all down, that's what it comes down to. And I think we got to think about moving ahead so he can get the, the sheet wall repaired. So we're going to end up with another Hawkins and Denali where, you know, the city said we're going to hold adjacent property owners responsible. Never happened. And we ended up paying a half a million dollars to affect the repair.
Your Honor, if I could restate that and move out a little bit out of, you know, just legal technicalities, it, it, it seems to me the, the, the rock wall needs to get done. We need to move it off dead center. We can't have an open-ended veto to whatever the Promenade easement may be. We retain the right, if it looks like the maintenance or what it's going to take to put in that Promenade, or there's never any money, to simply not go forward. Or we can say at that time, we'd like to go forward, but we want to do an, an, an item to cover X, Y, and Z. I hope, and it, you know, it hasn't been circulated, that this type of language or something substantially close to it, as I transmitted to Carl, you know, this is what I've done in 10 minutes, we're going to have, you know, at least another lawyer to look at it. The only thing it's, it, it, it's really clear and fine is if and when we're going to step up and pay for what we cause and will that give everybody enough solace that we can put it together as best as we can with all these unknowns and get them going on the burn?
Carter? Go ahead, Bob.
I, I think that there's always going to be the speculation of what may or may not happen in the future. I think that with this draft that we have before us, it gives us the opportunity to present something to the other council and, and hopefully like the expressed, to move us off at that center so we can at least get the structure of the wall done. So I, I would move that we move forward.
Now, yeah.
Because the version that's going to fall in the water is...
No, it's not on the agenda. Was we have four hands?
I would, I would just take it as clarification of council's previous direction and if there's a solid, solid majority will...
Four hands for the ordinance that we already approved? I heard that, I think we already approved? Or this new one here, Carl?
This is what we're moving forward with.
Okay. So everybody, we're moving forward with this. Okay, you have four hands to direct the staff. One, two, three, four, five.
Now, what does moving forward mean? Are we going to get something out so that...
I'm going to get that, that out to them. I need, when I'm done at the hospital, to spend a little more time with the public works director and finalize our comments on another aspect. And my, my goal, but stuff happens, is to have our comments and all this back to them by close of business tomorrow.
So there's more to getting this done than just this?
Oh, yes. Oh, yeah.
That's what I was referring to earlier.
There are, there are some other issues that may come back to us, but...
Well, I, 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 again, neither of the other parties brought any of this to the city's attention really until after the time and Carl will tell you, I was up there begging late Tuesday, I think we may get some, we may get some. It came in Wednesday, there was so much, it just, it just couldn't be done. When, when I send it out, I'm going to urge them to have, you know, changes, agreements and disagreements back to me in time that it makes the packet cut off on, on, on next Tuesday. That's the most I can do.
We have an additional week, April 5th meeting.
Yeah, we have an additional week.
Right. So we'll see if we can bring that...
Yeah, right. So.
We need to convene earlier to make sure that this works. I think that that should be held in availability.
I sincerely hope not, and thanks for working through the struggle.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks Mitch.
Okay, Carl, you're back on.
Just two other runs real quick then, Mr. Mayor. I want to congratulate the library director and the library staff for being nominated for the Library Institute, or the Institute, excuse me, of Museum and Library Services National Medal. Even if they should not receive it, just being nominated is quite the accomplishment. I think the community should be very proud of that. And then I just would like to give a quick shout out to Rebecca Brown, my former administrative assistant, for being appointed to the Governor's Advisory Council on Libraries. She's on our li, library advisory board in Ketchikan. And I think she will do a very good job in representing the interests of Southeast. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. You guys ready for the executive session?
Quick question for staff on museum closure. Does that mean that history pests can bother you during that time or not?
Yeah.
Need a Maxwell museum director. It's all about whether we answer the phone or not. So, yeah, staff will be there eight to five. We're pretty much there every day until the wee hours, putting the permanent exhibit together. So, yeah, we're available still.
So on Tuesday, I'll be able to get in because of me...
Just ring the doorbell.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, we're going to be moving into executive session. I would like to defer, um, item A3 and B1 and 2. We can do those at a later date, Carl.
Two, one.
That's the peace health.
Right.
That's the stuff for the telephone.
That's right. Uh, B1, I, my understanding is the council approved that on, under...
Okay, yeah.
Under consent.
So then we can defer to?
B2. Correct. A, A3 and B2.
Yeah.
All right, we'll skip those. Let's get to work on, um, bum, 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 bum.
15 to A2.
Yeah, go ahead.
Your Honor, I move the city council to declare that was consistent with the city attorney's request dated March 6, 218, is in the best interest of the city council to go into executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A1 and 3, and AS 44.62.310C1 and 3, discuss Leighton-Dawes joint venture construction performance of its contract obligation under contract number 13-38A for the Ketchikan Medical Center project, which includes the need to discuss subjects, knowledge of which could have an adverse impact on the finances of the city, and to discuss potential litigation strategies with legal counsel within the attorney-client privilege.
We have a second. All right, this is on potential litigation with Leighton-Dawes and joint venture constructors. Um, call the roll.
Severson?
Yes.
Kiper?
Yes.
Cooch?
Yes.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gates?
Yep.
Okay, that passed the seven efforts. Another room, quick.
Gave management, um, direction. We're here now for item number four, request for executive session, threatened litigation, Brian Perez. We have a motion.
Your Honor, I move the city council to declare consistent with the city attorney's request, dated March 2, 218, is in the best interest of the city council to discuss litigation threatened by Brian Perez and give direction to the city attorney in handling that matter in executive session in accordance with Ketchikan Municipal Code 2.04.025A1 and 3, which includes the need to discuss subject knowledge of which could have an immediate adverse impact on the finances of the city and to receive legal advice within the attorney-client privilege.
Second.
Yes.
Kiper?
Sure.
Cooch?
Yep.
Isom?
Yes.
Flora?
Yes.
Gates?
Yep.
Turn here and go into the other room.
Don't hold, don't hold your breath unless you're good and do.
Attack lab.
We're back on people.
Okay, we're back in session. We met in executive session, directed management, and we have no further action. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
You never gave yourself two minutes to come.
Oh, shit.
Start with him!
That's two days in a row, my man.
Start with Dave.
Team over, Dave.
Sure. I just, I just have one thing. And I, I just hate to mention this because I'm sure you'll all think I'm, I'm, I'm chewing my own horn here, but I was doing, I'll make this real, real quick. I was doing one of my, you know, every so often constitutionsals down in Bar Harbor, because I love the smell of boats and stuff. And I like to go, God, I don't want any more. It's a wonderful thing. Like most other people's boats are out. But I got, I got keel-hauled by a, by a gentleman there who was just really PO'd about how horrible we were to the fish processors. And we were driving them out, he wasn't a fisherman, we were driving them out of town. And I, and I patiently sat there and listened to him and let him vent on me. And I, and I explained some of the reasoning to the council. I did not say that I'd voted against it. I took one for the team.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't think that I, I changed his mind at all, but I'm, I'm, I'm helping you guys, even if it's, I'm, I'm helping you guys.
But how we say we, when we talk about the council, so I don't say I, so they can pick on all of you.
Yeah, exactly.
Mark?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Bob?
Southeast basketball.
Oh, wasn't it great?
Fantastic. See all these kids come together and do what they do and, and compete and, uh, you know, we housed, I had 10 people at my house for, for housing. And, but it was fantastic. They're all great kids and a lot of fun. So, um, that's something special in Southeast Alaska and it'd be good, great to have it here.
Unfortunately, Greg is, uh, drifting great. He does all the way to pump.
Julie?
I'm just too tired.
Judy?
Ditto.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Because I have nothing to add. So Julie, can I combine it so we can hear about your shift?
Mm-hmm.
All right. We have a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. That's a lot of work. Good job. I'll go get ready.